All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 25th, the Sony Board of Appeals meeting. We really didn't expect such a large crowd, but I'm glad we have some company at this meeting. We're only looking at three cases, or hearing three cases tonight. So you want to start us off, Trace?
Sure. We have Appeal 2022-031. That's William Levine, 32 Adelia Path, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-8-4-6, RA40 zoning, for variances and/or relief from town code Chapter 301-11, where proposed front yard setback is 34.2 feet, minimum required is 50 feet.
Someone here? Excuse me, are you attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jackie Morley, 33 West Second Street, Riverhead, New York, 11901, from Tumiletham. On behalf of the applicants, Bill and Audrey Levine.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My clients are proposing addition to their existing dwelling on Adelia Path, just off of Pier Avenue. The property is located on the north side of Adelia Path, adjacent to the end of the cul-de-sac there. The back of the property sits on the pond, and the entire property kind of slopes down towards the pond from Adelia Path. Bill and Audrey are requesting relief, 5.8 feet from the 40-foot front yard setback, as was the existing setback requirements at the time of the construction of their house in 1990, when the parcel was located in the residency zone at that time. As you're aware, it has since been rezoned to the RA40 zone, which under Section 301-11 requires 50-foot yard setback, front yard setback. However, as noted in the denial letter from the building department dated July 13, 2022, the property vested zoning in the residency zone via the CO dated May 2, 1990, for that dwelling. Both the denial letter and the CO were provided with the application to you all, I believe. And as you can see from the survey provided, the property does slope down pretty considerably, and the house kind of sits well above the driveway. And the front door can only be reached from the steps from the driveway, or through two sets of stairs from the interior of the garage up into the main part of the house. Bill is a Vietnam veteran, and he has a disability from his time in service, making it difficult for him to get to the main part of the house from the garage or the front path. Audrey is also disabled, and has similar health issues, and this is kind of making the current layout of the house difficult for her to navigate. The proposed addition, as you can see from the partial plot plan that was provided as well, would square off the front of the house at that front corner, and this would allow for the construction of an elevator next to the front stoop, which would allow both Bill and Audrey to access the garage, access the main floor from the garage. If you look at the partial plot plan, it's right to the left of the main stoop, where that 14.8-foot mark is. And looking at the required standards for review of the variance in general, this is a very minor request. As we noted, it's only roughly a six-foot variance from those previously granted front yard setbacks of 40 for the front yard. This area is already disturbed and improved by the driveway, and it would kind of hang over that driveway area on part of the property. It's already been improved. It's the least amount necessary to accommodate the needs of the occupants, and allow for that wheelchair access from the main elevator to the main floor, and just make it much easier to get up from that really kind of sunken garage area, driveway area, up into the main part of the residence. It's consistent with the character of the neighborhood in general, and it really is the only feasible area for an addition, as you can see from the plot plan. If there's any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
So you said there's an elevator going into the addition to the house?
Right, yeah. So that'll, and just from the way that I think the house is currently set up, there wouldn't be enough space to get in and out of that elevator. It would really make it much better for them, much easier.
Louie, you got anything?
I have no issue.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay, let's have a reading.
When they applied for the permit, did you make the building inspector aware of the code that there are some exemptions from fees when you're installing handicapped accessibility items?
I am not aware if we did or not. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you may just want to look into that.
Of course, absolutely. I appreciate that, Mr. Barnes.
No problem.
Thank you.
So I move that the Appeal 2022-31, for variances and relief from town code Chapter 301, Section 11, where the proposed front yard setback is 32.2 feet, and the minimum required is 50 feet, in accordance with the application sketches and amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. All right, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Godzilla?
Aye.
Mrs. Zewski?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted, good luck, and have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Levine here?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, Appeal 2022-032, Andrea Rubino, 81 Longview Drive, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-14-2-6, RA40 zoning, for variances and/or relief from town code Chapter 301-9A1B, where proposed deck 9.8 feet from side property line when 20 feet required, and Chapter 301-9A1C, where proposed deck 14.9 feet from rear property line when 20 feet required.
Who's here for this? Is anyone here for this appeal?
Second call.
Yeah, we'll come back to this. Let's go to the next case.
Okay, next case is Appeal 2022-033, Vince Calbosa, Holly Tree Lane, Jamesport, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-69-38, 69-3-19, and 69-3-62, RB80 zoning, for variances and/or relief from town code Chapter 301-296D, where proposed agricultural reserve lot is 8.55 acres in size, minimum required is 10 acres, and Chapter 301-33E, where proposed agricultural reserve lot is 8.55 acres in size, minimum required is 10 acres.
Please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vince Calbosa. I'm with the applicant Red's Adventure. My office address is 1361 Lincoln Avenue, Suite 6, Holbrook, New York. Mr. Chairman, if I may, approach the clerk to present the copies of the notices that were mailed to the surrounding neighbors, property owners, also proof of mailing, including the copies of the certified mail receipts that were postmarked on August 15, and signed and notarized affidavit of the posting, and photos of the signs that were posted, both on the time of the day the sign was being posted, and today's hearing days.
Bring those up.
Thank you. Tracey, move.
Mr. Chairman, as stated in the call of the meeting, we are here tonight seeking relief from town code Chapter 301, Section 296D, where the minimum lot size for the agricultural reserve is 10 acres, and our proposed agricultural reserve lot, as drawn on the sketch plan submitted to the planning staff and planning board, is 8.55 acres. We submitted to the planning department a cluster subdivision sketch and yield plan. We were heard at the July 28 meeting, where we presented those plans, and the planning staff moved to continue on with the application, but recognized that there was a need for a variance for us to preserve the farm as is right now. So our cluster subdivision is, we're seeking to subdivide three individual parcels, a total of 12.96 acres. To create this cluster subdivision, we would create four new single-family dwelling lots, and the creation of an 8.55-acre conservation, which would be limited to agricultural uses. As noted in the planning board hearing, the proposed subdivision is considered a Type II action pursuant to SECR, and no further environmental review is needed at this time. As stated in the call, there's three parcels that make up this property on the north side of Peconic Pay Boulevard, and consist of the two roadways, Seaman Road on the west side of the property, which is approximately a 25-foot wide right-of-way, and Holly Tree Lane, which is located near the center of the property, which is a 50-foot right-of-way, which was incorporated in the town's highway system. The property is presently vacant, with the exception of the improved road surfaces of Seaman Road and Holly Tree Lane, and Seaman Road is a gravel roadway having a width of approximately 16 to 18 feet wide, while Holly Tree is a paved roadway having a width of approximately 20 feet in width throughout its length. Our yield map that we submitted identified a 50-foot wide roadway with a cul-de-sac, a recharge area, and four lots, so we conformed to the dimensional requirements of the RB80 zoning use district, with the lots ranging in size from 85,950 square feet through 150,536 square feet. So again, we're here seeking the variance on the farm lot, not seeking a lot, you know, dimensional relaxation on any of the other proposed lots. As the code states, you know, the requirement is for a 10-acre farm lot, and we're asking for the 5.5 acres that's existing now to be preserved, so we don't have to alter the lot lines of the four other lots, which would require more clearing or taking down of the trees on the four lots. So in working with the planning department up until now, planning staff has recommended that we leave the map as is for the 8.55 acres, and not touch the other adjacent lots. So to the maximum extent practical, the portion of the tract is going to be preserved for agricultural use. It's previously been used for agricultural purposes, and this will be preserved under the agricultural conservation easement area. We're going to establish limits of clearing on the maps, and these would be preserved as non-disturbance buffers, as the existing vegetation will serve as the mitigation for potential noise and dust that would occur on the conservation parcel during agricultural This year also is adjacent to another piece of farmland that had been preserved to the west, and that's one of the conditions with the planning department, that they like to have it contiguous. We believe that we've done a great job with preserving the prime agricultural soils. There's a requirement in the planning department that no less than 70% of the soils be preserved, and we have preserved 73.9% in our plan. So we believe that we've created the best yield for the property in total, and we ask that this board seek, grant the relief that we seek.
Okay. Louie, Dan, anybody ever come up?
No.
Well, we'll see if anybody has any objection.
Is anyone out in the audience that would like to comment on this? Come up. Just raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Pull that mic down so we can hear you.
Certainly. Is that better?
Great. Name and address, please.
Joan Seer, 107 St. Mary's Drive, Jamesport.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, gentlemen. I wanted to comment and ask the zoning board of appeals to please consider requiring the developer to maintain and preserve all of the current wooded buffer between both the agricultural lands that are proposed to be preserved, and the homes that are proposed to be developed. There is a, this would be the wooded area on the eastern boundary of the property that he's proposing. If he or the developers preserve all of that, I believe that it might increase the total preserved acreage, bringing the property closer to the required 10 acres that needs to be preserved, per the code in the area, and it would also preserve a valuable woodland habitat for many animals. And I can tell you, there's box turtles, and there's red fox, and there's gray hawks, and screech owls, and possums, and raccoons, and I feel like they need a place to live around there, because there's so much development and so much woodland in the town of Riverhead that's being developed, and so many trees are being cut down, that I really hope that you'll consider preserving that and requiring him to preserve that. In addition, the new homes, I believe, would benefit by having a significant wooded barrier between the existing homes on St. Mary's Drive. The increased privacy, I would presume, would increase the property value of the new homes to be developed. So in closing, I hope you'll give my request serious consideration to maintain all of the existing wooded buffer on the eastern border of the property, because, again, the town of Riverhead is just losing too much woodland area, and I think that our neighborhoods deserve to have some more of that preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Did you attend the planning board hearings?
I watched them online.
You did?
Yes.
Did you write or submit anything in writing to the planning department?
I did not.
Okay.
Because I'm only starting to learn more about this, and I understand that the developers plan to preserve 2.5 acres of the wooded area, but I don't think that, if I'm understanding my calculations on that strip of wooded area on the eastern border, 2.5 acres is not the entire width of it, it's less than that, and I'm not sure where the developer plans to take those additional woods out, but if it's behind the homes he wants to develop, I think that they would benefit by having the woods, and I think all the wildlife in the area would benefit, too.
Well, just so you understand, we're only going to give a variance based on the amount of acres. The planning board would be the board that would try to require buffers and tree removal and maintaining trees.
Okay.
So that should be brought to them.
Okay.
So, I mean, it looks like...
But do I understand that ship has sailed?
Well, nothing's sailed.
[laughing]
No, but you can certainly go, I would recommend you go see one of the planners, the guy, unless he wants to be hurt.
Yes.
Chairman, if I may?
Come right up.
Just address those comments, please?
Yes.
If I could approach the map, just point out on the map...
Can I look at the map?
Yeah, this is a good example. This is the plot as it lays right now. This area right here is the tree line, as you can see the area.
Wait a second, that's, okay, that's right, okay.
So you're saying Mary's?
Yeah, I'm right there.
Okay. All of this is going to stay, as is.
Come up front.
The entire woodland, the whole length?
Yeah.
All the way down to the last developed house on Holly Tree Lane that's currently there.
Right, so all of this that you see is straight is going to stay.
Okay, so where are the new houses going?
Inside these dotted line areas.
So, one, two, three, four. Okay, so those are the wooded lots on Holly Tree that are currently there.
Which is paved up to here right now.
Yes, okay. And then the two houses there. So there's the one house here, but none of these woods are going to be preserved behind...
So the idea is to preserve the buffer around the perimeter of these houses as well?
How wide is that buffer?
It's at least 60 feet.
So a 60-foot, 60 square feet in total acreage?
That's square feet, almost 60 foot.
A 60-foot wide buffer behind this property.
So this would have, I'm sorry, 25 feet on this side, 60 on this side, 60 and 25 here.
25-foot, okay.
Yes, 25-foot wide.
Right. Right. And then the rest of that is staying?
This is all stay, and this here as well.
That's very helpful, to understand that better. Okay, so 25 feet there, and it's behind...
And so what we're looking to preserve is the piece that you see, that you know of as the form.
Right, yes. Just so you know, that's me. That's how.
Okay.
So obviously, if I may, I'm a little concerned about the buffer.
We probably, we really need you to address the microphone, I'm sorry. You have to talk under oath.
And you have to identify yourself, too, sir.
Yeah, no problem.
But thank you for clarifying that for the public.
Yes, Vince, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Yep, yep. Solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God. Yes, I do. State your name and address, please. Okay, Zachary Stern, 71 St. Mary's Drive, Riverhead, obviously. So, name and address, yeah. Speak to the mic. Okay, yeah, sorry. Zachary Stern, 71 St. Mary's Drive, in Riverhead.
Now you're talking.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think Joan pretty much expressed the feeling and the concerns that many people on St. Mary's Drive have, and I just, I don't want to repeat everything she said, but, you know, the quality of life buffer, and I think also for the developer, that in terms of having some space in between houses and trees and buffers, not only for the wildlife and for the turtles, I had one in my yard the other day, but just, you know, in general, for the appearance and the value of the properties, and I think it would benefit people on both sides, other than that, I think Joan said everything need be.
Are you satisfied with what you explained?
Yeah, I'm trying to imagine the 25 feet and what that means, but I do appreciate, by the way, that consideration for that has been made. But I understand also that it's more of a planning board thing than your jurisdiction, anyway. You're more focused on the preservation of the farmland rather than the concern of the built area.
Correct. And things were laid out with billing envelopes, so it's really kind of easy to see how it's going to work out.
Mm-hmm.
And most people don't want to clear trees if they don't have to.
Okay.
But they don't want them on top of their house, either.
No.
It's not good for me.
I understand that as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vince, do you want to add to any of that?
Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer as well.
Oh, I don't know, my questions are answered, so it seems like you guys have prepared in advance about some of this space that you want to preserve and what have you, so, do you have any questions?
It's one of the benefits of having a pre-application with the planning department, you kind of come in and lay it out, and you work with the planning department to come up with the best application.
Okay, good. Is there anyone else? You guys want to read?
I've got this one. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that Appeal Number 2022-033, Vince Calbosa, Holly Tree Lane, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-69-3-8, comma, -19 and 62, with RB80 zoning for variances and/or relief from town code Chapter 301-296D, where proposed agricultural reserve lot is 8.55 acres in size, and minimum required is 10 acres, and Chapter 301-33E, where proposed agricultural reserve lot is 8.55 acres in size, and minimum required is 10 acres, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches, with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Godzilla?
Aye.
Mrs. Zewski?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted, and please honor all the things that you're going to do.
Will do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you.
Don't forget your map. Maybe you could show some people out in the audience on your way out. Thank you. Have a good night, thank you.
Is anyone here for Longview Drive? Please come up.
Please, here at Longview Drive, true drive. Are you here, sir? Come on up.
Oh. Here we go, we're here, sir. There's your right hand, how are you?
Good.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and your address, and you might want to pull that mic down so we can hear you.
Andrea Rubino, 81 Longview Drive, Riverhead.
Thank you.
Yes.
Please state what you're here for.
I'm here for a variance for my deck.
Okay, tell us about it.
So I'm renovating a house. It's about 750 square feet, and I have to put a deck in the back because the back of the house is up high, and it's, the house has a lot of stairs to begin with, and I just think it's going to give me additional living space, because the house is so small. So from what I understand, it's not within code, that's why I'm getting a variance. It's the way the house is situated, I don't really have a lot of room on the west side of the house, so that's why I'm here, because I really do need to put a deck. And I, you know, I don't know, you know, what I was planning on doing was putting some steps, so if you walk on, the only way you can get into the backyard of my house is walking up the west side, and I was going to put some steps to walk up onto the deck, and, you know, I was proposing a deck that was 20 by 20.
And they're showing steps down on the serving?
Yes.
So those steps, that's where you want to build them?
That's where I wanted to build it, yes.
Okay. And on the other side, you're going to have steps that go into the yard, which...
Right.
Not much of a yard, though.
It's a small piece, it's a small parcel.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It's an old family house, I renovated it, I kept it the same size, but, you know, it's just that it's hard to use the backyard without having a deck, and it gives me an extension of the kitchen, I can only fit, like, you know, three chairs in the kitchen, so in the summer it gives me an additional room.
Okay, are you full-time resident here?
I am now.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll see if anybody else has anything to say.
Anyone else have anything here? Anyone in the audience, please come forward. You attorney, sir? I'm sorry? Are you attorney? Oh, God, no, no. Okay, raise your right hand, please. Solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Yes, I do. Please state your name and address. Douglas Sorensen, 228 Park Road, Riverhead. Okay. I just had the opportunity to meet my neighbor, and we spoke briefly out in the hallway in the lobby. I don't have an objection to her using her outdoor living space, but I have an objection to the size or the scope of the deck and its proximity to my property. My property is just west of her property. The rear of my property line borders the west side of her house, which is where the deck is going to be. Her property is approximately 18 to 20 feet higher in elevation than my property. The deck is proposed to be about 48, 40...
The deck is proposed to be about forty-eight, forty to forty-eight inches high, so that would put anybody standing on the deck roughly thirty to thirty-three feet above my property. My house is about twenty to twenty-four feet from the property line. Uh, that would put the deck, uh, within about thirty-three feet of the rear windows of my house. At that elevation, anybody standing on that deck has bird's eye clear, unobstructed view into my rear yard, my side yard, and the living space of my home. Not only the great room and the dining room or the kitchen area, bathroom as well, that's all situated on the back of the house. The bedrooms are on the north side of the house, and that, that'll come into question. So I don't have an objection to anybody using the outdoor living space, that's why we're all here, we're here to enjoy this. Uh, I plan to be out here full-time in about a year myself, once I decide to fully retire. Um, with that said, I would ask that this project be scaled down, scaled down in this sense. Right now, the plans call for approximately a fifteen-foot setback in the rear, which is about five feet over the building code, and it's requesting, the homeowner's requesting a nine-foot setback on the side, and then the stairs going up to it would probably put those stairs within about four feet of the property line, maybe four and a half feet of the property line. I re, would request that the, the deck on the west side be set back fifteen feet as well. So that way, we have a consistent setback on the west side as well as the north side.
So you're saying you want the deck pushed to the east?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Fifteen feet.
Yes, sir. Six feet.
Six feet, and so a total for fifteen?
Yes, sir, so we'd have a foot.
So she moved it six feet to the east, and she maintained the same size, would you object to that?
No.
The height doesn't bother you?
The height doesn't bother me because I, I had the opportunity to speak with her and her brother, and they have indicated that they're gonna put some screening around the deck. Um, initially, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Rubino, and I said, you know, how about a patio? Because I, I don't think there's any setback on a patio at all, but I'm not sure about that, you know better than I. And, um, she said that the, the steps are an issue for her, I understand that. So I would just ask that the deck have the fifteen-foot setback on the side.
You really wanted to move it six foot east?
Yes, sir.
That's what you're asking?
Yes, I think it stands now at about nine feet, right, the proposal is nine feet?
Nine point eight, I think.
Well, it's nine point eight, which is along the existing structure as it is, but you wanna see the deck moved six feet.
Fifteen-foot setback in the property is?
Six feet.
Six feet.
From the corner of the house, you want it in six feet.
Six feet east?
That's what you're asking?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And did you propose that to them, and did they say anything?
We did speak about it.
And response?
Uh, it's something that I think that's gonna be considered, uh, there might be a hardship on having to move a door.
Ms. Rubino, you wanna step up?
Why don't you ask them to step up? Um, why don't you, come on up, folks. It might be a construction issue, or they have to do something with the door, or.
Are you gonna speak, sir?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand. Psalm, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. State your name and address, please.
My name is Julio Cianci, I'm Andrew's brother, fourteen Tideway Lane, East Northport, New York.
Could you spell your last name?
C-I-A-N-C-I.
Thank you.
The back door on the north side of the house, the jam is roughly four feet from the west corner of the house.
Okay.
Okay, we actually moved the door, but the rooms are very small in the house, so the kitchen's maybe nine feet, maybe ten feet, I think it's close to nine feet wide, so we try to kinda center that door as best as we can in the kitchen. So, we can't move the deck, the entire deck, over to that side. Uh, Andrea is going to be living in the house full-time, and she's single, and it's not a large family or anything like that, it's going to be entertaining out there. I'm sure there's going to be some people out there at times, but the issue comes into play is that, I guess there's different ways of configuring the deck. Of course, Andrea wants to get this, this built as soon as possible, and, you know, again, get along with the neighbors. So it's, we understand that aspect of it. Unfortunately, the difference in elevation, them being at a different elevation than, um, where Andrew's property is, causes a little bit of a unique situation.
Probably, I, I think he said he's not concerned about the elevation.
Well, if we had some screening. So what I, outside talking about, if we're able to keep the deck where it's situated, if we, what I suggested is maybe we could add some screening along that west side, like a lattice, something of that nature, just on one side, not around the whole deck, um, that may work, and she can possibly, uh, grow some, I don't know, flowers or whatever, as a climbing thing, whatever it may be, but to try to meet in the middle somewhere. Um, the, reconfigure the deck also, I think she has, um, sanitary in the back, so you just can't move it over, or else we may have an issue with septic at that point. So, there's a little bit of a concern on the logistics there. Um, possibly the deck could be chewed out a little bit, you don't wanna do that. Whatever will work, you know, we're trying to make something work, but part of the deck will have to remain where it's at. But maybe a proportion of it could be reduced or pushed back.
Well, I'm looking at a twenty by twenty.
Yes.
So, what would be so bad if you went out like twelve feet and then went across the back of the house, or is the elevation so different that you can't do that?
No, the elevation of the, our property, Andrew's property, is flat. So we can do that, so if you do.
Did you consider that?
Excuse me?
Did, did, did she consider that? Possibly going out ten or twelve feet and then going across the back of the lot? As opposed to going straight out twenty feet?
So, if you're referring to on the, on the north side of the house?
Yeah.
Have a, because you still have to have access to the door.
Right.
Doors are closed.
And you would still have it?
You'd still have it, because you'll have, let's say, five, six feet across the whole back of the house, and then shoe out that west corner a little bit, and make that a little smaller.
Also, if you do ten or twelve feet out, and then go the remainder of the house this way, you could put the steps around the side. Instead of putting them on the side, but it's only nine point eight feet, maybe put the steps in the north side. So you'll have steps on the north and east side. So go out ten, twelve feet, ten feet's a little too tight for deck furniture, twelve feet's a perfect number for a deck. So go ten, twelve out, and then go across the back of the house, go thirty-two feet.
Yeah, we, it's a small house, and there, there's, um, some low windows there.
Maybe you wanna describe the back of the house, so to speak?
Do you have any pictures of the rear of the house, with you?
Could you describe the back?
I may, I may. You know, it's also part of the backyard is, it's nice to keep some open space there, too. Now, the whole yard's gonna be cut, where you're just gonna have a, just a, an alleyway, um, along that backside of the fence.
Now, if I'm reading this right, the back of the house is thirty-two point three feet?
Yes.
All right. Now, can you tell me what's back there, so to speak, windows, doors, whatever, stuff like that?
There, shh, one, two, you have one door.
Where is that about?
About four feet off the west corner.
So it's right here. All right.
And then you have bathroom window.
Right.
And the bedroom, is the bed on the double window or single window?
The bedroom window is an egress window, that's how.
Yeah, so that's the mask, that's the master, um, bedroom, that back corner, too.
So even better to come out to, onto the deck.
Excuse me?
Even better to come out onto the deck, if you get to get out.
They hear right, there's a door in the bedroom?
There's not a door in the bedroom, it's an egress window.
You're by yourself, what's the difference?
That, that makes me more concerned, to be honest.
Okay.
So essentially.
I'm just making suggestions to see if we can make it work for everybody, but.
So essentially, the door is on the, the west side, and what is that, that a kitchen or something like that?
It's kitchen.
Okay.
You just need to talk into the microphone. You need to talk into the microphone.
Yeah, we're sorry, the guy in the backside.
That's the kitchen door, that he was talking about.
Now, what about the idea of putting a lattice or something like that?
I mean, that's possible, I just, you know.
We would, we'd be willing to consider that on that, on that west side.
Well, there's somebody else in the back here making signs, and he wants to say something.
Your say something?
I'm gonna speak.
Okay, let's hear.
I'll hear from you next.
Let's hear from him next when you're done.
Okay, we're gonna dig up these photos in the meantime.
Okay, thank you.
What's that, pops, sir?
I only know certain sign language.
Thomas Chaffery.
Oh, I know.
Two-twenty-four Park Road.
I know that guy.
Of course, I know you.
Psalm, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
One hundred percent, help me God, yes.
State your name again, please.
Thomas Chaffery, two-twenty-four Park Road.
Thank you.
So my eastern boundary borders Andrea's, uh, the applicant's property.
Yeah. Pull that mic down just a little.
Yeah, I'm short.
Let me go, you the one that sent the letter?
Yes, I am, yes, good. So, I genuinely like Andrea, and Doug and I have been friends for, for years, I would like everyone to get along.
So would we.
I just feel that the deck is a little aggressively close to our house when the eastern boundary of the property is view of a preserve with nothing but flag lot driveways on that side of the property, with no neighbors on that side. Uh, I hate to see the deck lowered over both my property and Doug Sorenson's property.
Which one is your lot, are you north of them or you?
I am on the western boundary, on the southwestern boundary. Doug and I share approximately.
So you're on Longview Drive?
I'm on Longview Drive.
I got you, okay.
That's right, I'm on.
And you're just adjacent to?
And Park Road, I'm on the corner of Park and Longview Drive.
Okay.
And Doug and I share a bound, boundary, and Andrea and I share.
Okay, yeah, he's in the middle, so to speak.
Yeah.
And you're on the left, and she's on the right.
That's them, right there.
Yeah, I got you, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, I'm on the corner, and she's up the hill above me.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, um, I think the deck has to be pushed east. That's, I think that's the only solution to this thing. I think I'd be able to see the knees of everyone on this deck with, even with a six-foot fence at the property line.
You, your property's pretty saturated with vegetation, though, isn't it?
You've noticed that, huh?
I did.
Yes, yes, it is, yeah.
So I don't know what you're gonna be looking at, it's like trees.
Well, you know, there are, you try and get privacy from someone who's twenty-five feet higher than you, and if you're gonna grant me a variance to put it.
This deck is in the back of the house, and you're kinda like.
I'm diagonally over, I have a clear view of where the deck will be from my property.
Okay.
So, they'll have a clear view of me.
So you're gonna have to look past their whole thirty-two-foot house, and then look at the deck?
No, not at all, I don't have to, I don't have to do that, no, not, that's not the way it's set up, so.
So you want, you want the deck pushed in?
I would like it pushed east.
So, so both, both people are objecting or saying easts?
Okay.
You want it to move east?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Away from Doug Sorenson's and, and my property line.
And her technical problem may be that the door is only four feet from the corner of the house.
Give me the four feet, then, you know, I mean, I, I'm with Doug that I would prefer fifteen-foot buffer, wide as Bucky. O'Neil'll get a fifteen-foot buffer, and we get nine feet with a stairs that make it more like four point five feet. Yes, yes.
That's why Bucky gets it.
Yeah, I hear you, thanks, I know he knows everybody, and that's part of the problem.
Oh, I know him, yeah.
And I genuinely love all of my neighbors, and I want us all to get along, but I think good fences make good neighbors, and good spacing makes good neighbors.
Of course, of course, so, let's see if they can come up with an alternative.
I thought a catwalk out the back door, four-foot wide catwalk out the kitchen door, and then, I have no objection to the twenty by twenty size, by the way, I just wanna be clear with that, too. Put the twenty by twenty deck back there, that's fine, just give me a little bit of space.
So, the house already is encroaching at nine point eight feet, which is the front part of the property where you live.
Yes.
And you would be happy that you don't see the deck, even though if it's offset six feet? That's what would make you happy.
Oh, I think if the deck goes six feet, I'm delighted, I, I think even probably four feet would make a difference.
That sounds like a reasonable offer.
Yeah, I don't know if it'll work out as far as, uh.
The logistics of where the door is, but, and the other side of it, as I said, like a catwalk to the main deck, and have the deck be the centerpiece of the backyard, that's fine. I think that preserving the eastern land as the backyard that has no neighbor at all, I mean, that's where the deck really ought to be, is over that way.
Well, I tried to suggest that, but she says she has an issue with egress through her bedroom when.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand why a single woman would not want to have a deck underneath the window, but I think up to the window could possibly work, something like that, and still give us a little more space.
Well, I think she needs to work out the logistics, so, can we ask you to come back up and tell us what you think you can do and cannot do?
I did find a, excuse me, I did find a photo.
All right, let's see.
Of course, um, do, do you, do you think you can move it four feet and compromise? Uh, I don't know if it's a left-hand draw.
Actually, it's not even four feet, I found that.
Oh, it's probably.
It's auto, uh, it's forty-two inches to the jam, so that's like the house. So what we try to do is pretty much.
It always rotates.
Yeah, I know.
You can lock it.
I try to do that.
Maybe you took it three near feet.
Is that a Samsung or is that an Apple?
It's an Apple, but I'm gonna.
Well, just do the flashlight and then hit no rotate.
That's a good idea. Lock it.
Correct. Now you're back.
Okay, so this, where the sink is, this is the west side of the house.
Yes, I see it.
And then the door's right there, unfortunately, I cut it off, but it's like forty-two inches to the door jam. So what Andrew proposed, if she, she has the walkway, she has the, we had to put an egress window in, in the basement, even though there's not a bathroom there, but whatever, so we put that, we're putting that egress in there, so they have to kinda walk around it, but we, we can have a path going, and again, it's gonna be like three foot wide, um, three, four foot wide, going along the house to approach the deck, and what her goal was is to be able to walk straight up a couple of steps to the deck elevation, when the deck elevation's gonna be a step below the threshold of the door, at least four, maybe six inches, but no more than six inches from the threshold of the door. And so go up and approach the deck and have access to her back door, okay, and that's what she wanted to do. Uh, we understand the issue that's coming up because of the difference in elevation, so.
So that kitchen, is that already an as-built kitchen or a proposed future?
No, this kitchen's built, cabinets are in, the door is, yeah, it's done. So we can't move it over six feet.
Can we move it over forty inches and everybody be happy? No, you're not happy. Neither is six feet. Six feet is not a lot. It's the length of your bathtub, actually, it's less, a bathtub's five feet. Now, you could speak, yes, of course.
You can speak at the mic.
Address the chairman, please, I'm sorry.
I just wanna show you the photo of the back of the house also. I'm still sworn.
I mean, I just looked at the layout of the kitchen. They would have to rip the door out to move it to say let's four feet, because Mr. Chaffery said he would be okay with four feet, but you're not happy with that.
No, I understand that, and I understand what you're saying, and I, I had asked the applicant out in the hallway, when this was proposed, when the architect did the drawing, was this a comprehensive plan? Was all of this taken into consideration before the deck variance was requested? Because then maybe the construction could have been reconfigured to accommodate the deck within the parameters of the code.
It's very hard to meet the code, be small, undersized.
But I'm not asking for a twenty-foot setback.
Right, I understand.
And I am asking just for a reasonable amount of privacy, I'm not asking for absolute seclusion, it's not possible, so.
Unfortunately, it appears that where that door is, that's about the best you can do, a little, maybe a little bit to the east, but you can't expect it to go through a bedroom, and, and, and I think the other part is the kitchen. Otherwise, the way the house is now, I think the only place where that door is where it is now, maybe you can move it a little bit east, but you can't do much more than that.
Excuse me, have we given up on the lattice? I mean, they could put a substantial lattice there with growth and everything, you wouldn't see anything.
The lattice would have to be at the deck elevation, as we discussed.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
That was where it was, now it's over forty inches, or forty-two inches.
Forty-two.
You, you have to bear in mind that anybody staying on the deck was five or six feet tall, they have about a twenty-nine-foot perch down to the property. So, putting a fence at the property line, the fence would have to be enormous.
It wouldn't help. It wouldn't help.
Right, right.
So, to screen it, probably be the best to physically put it on the deck on the west side of the deck.
At the same elevation of the deck.
Like a six-foot screen.
That's acceptable.
I mean, you could put a PVC fence right across.
It has to have some air perforation because of the wind, so we're gonna have to build some rigidity, I think, between lattice and plating. Work out.
Can you go back to the mic?
Yes, sir.
Can I, he correctly said that if they were to do that, the lattice, the plan as is, is acceptable to you? Is that what you're saying?
Not as the plan stands. If it's moved, whatever distance is determined east, whether it's forty-two inches, six feet, whatever the distance is that it's determined to be moved east.
But if screening's put up in lieu of that, can she keep it where it is?
No.
Even if she screened?
I would object to that. I would object.
Even if she screened it?
Right, if she moves it over...
And nobody can see down.
So, if somebody, they move it over forty inches and put the lattice up, that's fine.
Okay, so now we're back to forty inches. We're good with forty inches of lattice.
Forty-two inches, whatever you said it was, yeah. Whatever, whatever the distance was to the door jam.
Is that doable? If you wanna speak, you have to go to the microphone.
It's doable.
Is that doable? Have you just agreed to that?
Anything is doable. We'll have to talk to the architect about it. And we still have to build steps to approach that.
Right.
So, would we be...
But if you go in forty inches, you can step in, step it off the line.
So, yeah, I would be, I would encroach that forty inches.
I would push the steps a little further north and then step it in behind the foundation and it'd be perfect. You don't need thirty-six inches. You'd...
Have, okay, have the steps a little further north and come up?
Away from the property line, indent it to the east. It'll actually look nicer. Think about it.
We'll have to think about that.
Can we hold this off for four weeks and you come back with an alternative plan? If any? Or, I mean, if everybody can live with forty inches and we can design a plan with the steps indented and you can come back with a plan in two weeks or four weeks, whatever you need, in time. I know she wants to get this deck done and probably before the fall.
We can do that in two weeks?
You can?
Two weeks?
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll try to come up with something that makes sense.
All right. We'll do that, then.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, September eighth.
So, we'll have you back on the eighth.
You're on, you're on. Does it, you have a respect way, move, move to adjourn this since September eighth? Six.
Mr. Leader, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
They'll have to submit new claims. Aye.
Yeah, I know. Aye.
And I vote aye. So, your chairman has been passed. Get out there, get friendly.
We'll go out there and hug each other.
Good. You're a great person.
Try. Try to make people happy.
All right.
I did that my whole life.
Is anyone else that wanna speak about anything tonight? There are no minutes to approve, so we'll skip that. Have I motioned that we adjourn this wonderful meeting?
So, may.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Take care, yourself.
Thank you.